Welcome to the Glen's Falls County Council meeting. It's Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. We're opening up our seven thirty regular session. We begin with the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman at-large Jim Clark.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We open the, uh, the meeting always with a public comment. If, uh, anyone would like to address the common council, please come to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Charles Randall. I live at twenty-four Leonard Street, Glen's Falls, New York. Um, I'm here on, um, about twenty-six Leonard Street. I've been in front of you folks probably six months ago about the problem that's going on in that, in a, in that residence. Um, about two weeks ago, I was assaulted now. It's gone from, from problem to being assaulted. Um, and it never seemed like nothing gets done.
And he was assaulted at his own property in his own driveway, broad daylight.
My tenants' kids are getting harassed. This is my, one of my tenants, Leonard. Um, he lives above me. Um, it's ongoing. I, I've talked to you before about it. I've talked to Bennett, Diane. What can we do to solve this problem? Fif- uh, just alone, fifty-one calls to that property alone this month or this year. Probably more because it's not been updated since last week and they've been there already, you know, since. I implore you guys to help me out here. I don't, I mean, I don't even want to go home anymore. I wake up every morning and go outside to see if my vehicles have been, tires have been slashed on my vehicles before. Damage has been done. They've been, they threatened Leonard to do stuff to his car. Well, I don't know what I can do.
The day that he was assaulted, he was, um, protecting my thirteen-year-old son who was being chased by one of them. Three o'clock in the afternoon.
And you said that, uh, the police came.
Police were already there prior. I left, come down, do, do a little banking because I couldn't get in my property because the police were in my, in my driveway. So when I got back, there was a gentleman in the, in the driveway and Leonard's son came out. And the next thing that the gentleman jumps up, starts going after Leonard's thirteen-year-old boy in my, in my, in front of my house. So I, I told him to get back on his property. He spat at me twice, then he came at me, swung and knocked my glasses off. And then I had to defend myself, come down, fill out a police report. They let him out before I could even get the police report done.
They assaulted him outside the police station. Yeah.
He assaulted me in front of the police station. So the-
Did they rearrest him?
Yes, they did. But it's ongoing. It's, it's not just-
And initially, they didn't book him for assault, right?
They booked him for, uh-
Harassment.
No, they initially opened container.
But we keep being told by the police and anyone that we talk to when we bring this up, call the police.
Yeah.
There's fifty calls right there where they've been to this house in, in four or five months. What else are we supposed to do?
You're welcome to come in and meet with me. We have a full report of what we're doing with them. We, um, we've gone to, uh, to, we're issuing again the, um, uh, the law, the nuisance abatement law. The owner of the home is currently in jail. Um, so is her, her, uh, brother. And we're issuing, um, uh, violations and evicting all the people that are currently in the place. That's what's being done from a building and codes department. We are arresting those people and that all adds to that thing. And if you'd like, I, I had a full meeting about this with the police chief and the, and the building and codes. And I'll, I'll be glad to get you a full report of everything that's being done. And they'll be in court. Again, uh, we're trying to get the building shut down and that court date is set for next week or the week after Wednesday.
Third Wednesday.
Third, third Wednesday of the month. So that would be next Wednesday.
Okay.
So, and I would, I would encourage you to go to and, and explain to the judge, um, what's recently happened. That's an escalation. I did not know about that, Chuck, but, you know, I, I think it'll help. I think it'll also help the, the police departments there. And since that they not only arrested that gentleman, but arrested him again for assaulting you and, and, and we, we are addressing it. We do everything we can to get him out, get them out of the house. And, and it is obviously made more difficult because the owner of the property is in jail, right? And we're going to serve that person, that, that property owner, um, the, their notice even though they're in jail, where we normally wouldn't, but we don't want this to continue any longer. We had it cleaned up and it was doing better. And then, then they, they got, they got away from us again. They, we had them, you know, we had them all, we had the, the building cleaned and again, it got, they got away.
They cleaned up the garbage and stuff, but the same individuals, these undesirable people, these addicts are over there. They've continued, that, that's my, they're, they're like migrated to the place now. There's squatters over there because she's not there. She's in jail. So there's all kinds of people in there that are coming and going.
And that's why we're going to get the judge to shut the building down and, and with her not in the property, right? So we have to serve everybody who's there. We're trying to figure out who's there so we can serve them all that notice and get them out of there. But please, uh, give my office a call tomorrow. I'll get back, I'll get all, everybody in charge and we'll get them all in one spot because that's what that I've been doing about. We're definitely not ignoring it. We're definitely not, but this is, this is the kind of nightmare and the, and the time that it takes. And it is unfortunate. And I know you're a, you're, I, in my opinion, you're one of the heroes of that neighborhood. You've invested not just in your house, but in other houses too. We've talked about you years ago about if we can get the property, you know, that wouldn't make a bad investment if we can, but it's, um, it's extremely difficult. The last time you and I spoke about this, the owner was in a nursing home with Alzheimer's. And it was their, their kids, right? And, uh, and now that, that owner has been, has passed away from Alzheimer's. The daughter, I believe, is the primary owner and we went to serve her papers and she's in jail. We went to try to serve the papers to the, to the brother and he's in jail.
Yeah, they're all in jail.
And so they're all in jail. And so I'm with you. We gotta get that property out and done. We are. We're in front of the judge. So please come and, and voice those concerns and I will too, if I can, if I can get up there. I'll, I'll be glad to share with them the longevity and the, the nightmare that this has been for the entire neighborhood.
It has been.
I know.
We have people cross the street moving because of it now.
Agreed, agreed.
We've got a few families that have left over the years.
If I could, if I could legally book them out of that house, I myself would. You know, I, I can't anymore. You can. It's not that we disagree with you. And so that's, this stuff takes a long time. And, uh, but I, please come and see me, okay? Give you the full, full information of what we can do and then how, you know, because it never happens quickly. But at least you'll know where we are in the process and what the court dates are. Come and help us.
All right. I have a couple of additional questions. There was, you also indicated there were three dogs that were running around.
Three pit bulls running around.
Biting people and-
Yeah. They're according to City Hall, none of them are licensed. I've called, uh, the animal control and obviously they can't just go in there and take the dogs, but they are dogs running around. Kids, you know, that were two blocks from the elementary school, you know?
Every time you see something illegal happening, whether it's a dog running without it or a dangerous dog, you've got to call and it doesn't matter the result of the last call, right?
Again, there's been fif- over fifty calls this year, Chuck.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then the other thing is, uh, if we know that there's like fifty calls here, why was this person who assaulted Chuck, um, only charged with open container?
He's been-
And then he, then he assaulted you again afterwards.
Yeah, he's been charged. He's in county lockup now.
I, I'm just, um, I'm concerned about the police follow-through on this. There's so many, uh, instances that people have been called out there. And then when it's like, when, when Chuck was assaulted, it's like, well, he's violating open container. I don't understand why that is. I also reached out to the police chief to ask for a fresh count of how many times this property was, uh,
Here, here's, uh, take the work-
I, I never got responded to, so.
Call.
That's enough. I know, just like some follow-up.
When we have the meeting, I'll, we'll invite everyone.
I'll stay in touch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
No, I wanted from the police chief. Yeah. No, it's not in my district. It's in Ed's district.
My name, as you know, is Kate Rose and I live in Glen's Falls. And I want to address you this evening about two issues. The first one is the good news. You have a wonderful employee, Bernadette Gray. She works in the mayor's office. I see her quite often when I go in to make a pest of myself and ask all sorts of questions. She's wonderfully polite, very knowledgeable about what all of you are doing and what the city is doing. And she told me she's retiring soon. So for the record, thank you Bernadette Gray for your services, city. The other issue that I want to address with you is your role as city employees, but more fundamentally, your role as my neighbor. As a city official, section four of the city charter defines your responsibilities as a common council member. They're very clear. Your duties, which are many, also include however, your duty to preserve order, peace and health and the safety and welfare of the city and the inhabitants thereof. That's a pretty heavy responsibility that you have. And today, every day, for quite some time now, as we watch the federal government administration threaten to cut fundamental services, including Medicaid, your responsibility is more important than it's ever been. As a resident, a voter and member of the healthcare coalition of the North Country, I urge you to join your voices and our actions to preserve fundamental healthcare, specifically in this case, Medicaid. One in five who live here, right here in great hometown USA are on Medicaid and we all know them. While their limited incomes make them eligible for Medicaid, they are not the poor. They are part of our family and we can never forget that. I look to you this evening for, to show your leadership on this fundamental human rights issue and to support a resolution reaffirming your commitment to your responsibility to do all you can to maintain the healthcare services we have. We cannot see one another based on income. I don't know your income. You don't know my income. I see you as complex individuals with many gifts and resources and talented talents and a few little things that could be fixed, all of us. But it's essential that we, when we come together to govern the city and make decisions that impact everyone, that we recognize and know that we're part of the same family, friends, neighbors. We see one another at the grocery store, waiting at the bus stop, shopping in thrift stores, walking along the trails in parks, sitting next to one another in houses of worship, attending programs in our museums, library and concert venues, and even run into one another occasionally at our many drive-through eateries, restaurants and bars that attract a lot of people and I'm sure all of us sitting in this room tonight. You let the rest of us, regardless of income, also go to the dentist, the doctor, have an occasional X-ray taken, wait for lab results and sometimes get bad news. When I'm sitting in the waiting room and Bill Collins walks in, I don't see the mayor. I see someone who's coming in for healthcare and the same with all of you. I don't see you as a political figure who represents a particular section of the city. As you think about a resolution this evening, supporting healthcare and specifically Medicaid, remember what we, all of us have in common, not just being residents in Glen's Falls, but we also share other qualities that are very important that don't get spoken of very often. Our humanity, our love for one another, our need and desire to care for one another. And as you contemplate the issue of healthcare for everyone, let us not forget the economic issue of caregivers and healthcare professionals if funding for Medicaid is cut and services lost in this community. Glen's Falls is rich, economically rich, in healthcare services. Glen's Falls Hospital, Hudson Head Waters, many independent physicians, therapists, dentists, laboratories, therapy centers, physicians, nurses, technicians, urgent care services and ambulance services. All of us, all of us have a stake in ensuring that those healthcare services are available to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome, there.
I am John Sawyer. I'm a twenty-seven-year resident in Glen's Falls. Had three kids graduate from high school here. Um, I've been a doctor here in town the whole time I've been here. My wife, Margaret, a nurse, worked at the public schools here. And I too wanted to speak about Medicaid. Um, I, uh, am a member as well of the Healthcare Coalition of the North Country, which is a non-partisan group. It's not meant to be political, honestly, in any way. Um, its goal is to raise awareness so that people understand what might be happening, what could happen. Um, it's got a focus on New York twenty-one, but in large part because that's how the data are collected. Um, it's hard to get data by town. It's hard to get data by county even, but by congressional district, it's relatively easier to get. So I thought I would just review a few of the facts and then let you guys make your own conclusions. So the, the first set of questions I had, um, was who's actually covered by Medicaid? And in, uh, New York twenty-one, there's two hundred and fifteen thousand people, which is twenty-eight percent of the population has some version of Medicaid. So large number of people. When you look at who those two hundred and fifteen thousand are, kids under nineteen years of age are sixty thousand. So, um, and that's about a third of all children underage nineteen. So a big chunk of kids are covered by Medicaid. Um, the Women's and Infant and Children's Program, the WIC program, is largely Medicaid. Um, it's hard to get exact number of how many women and kids are actually covered there, but I can tell you that fifty percent of the deliveries in this region are Medicaid deliveries, which includes Glen's Falls Hospital. Disabled people, about fifty percent of people with disabilities are on Medicaid and that's about thirty-three thousand in our area. The ACA expansion, which is the Affordable Care Act expansion, it was extra money that was given to expand coverage and about sixty thousand people got additional coverage. So that's a, a chunk that is actually in big discussion right now. And then finally are the dual-eligible people, the folks who have Medicare and Medicaid, uh, which includes lots of seniors. And when you get to the folks who are in nursing homes, about sixty percent of the residents of the nursing homes in the region are on Medicaid. So it's a huge, huge, um, issue for nursing homes. Well, what's being proposed in, in Washington are, the numbers are variable by which day you're looking at, but somewhere between seven hundred and fifty and eight hundred and eighty billion dollars with a B are proposed to be cut from Medicaid in the next nine to ten years. Um, for New York twenty-one, that would be, um, the, the estimates, these are estimates only, is that the two hundred and fifteen thousand that we currently have on Medicaid would go to about a hundred and sixty thousand. So about fifty-five thousand people would lose coverage. Um, the revenue over the next ten years would be a loss of two point four billion dollars to the region, which is money flowing through the system. It would have, I think, a very large destabilizing impact on the healthcare system regionally. Nursing homes, which are barely hanging in there right now, if their Medicaid funding was cut significantly, many of them would go bankrupt, which would then push those people out would likely cost even more because those folks are lined up in emergency rooms. Hospitals would struggle and provider practices would as well because Medicaid is one of the tiers that all these facilities rely on. So what can we do? Um, one is to be aware, to know what's going on. Second, to let our communities know what's going on. And thirdly, to communicate with our political leaders who might be able to say something. Thank you.
Not seeing any other public comment. I'm sorry. Sure, please.
Okay. I, I don't know if this is a different subject or a related subject.
Yeah, sure. Public comment.
Hello. My name is Tim Philmon, thirty-four-year resident. Um, I represent tonight the Mallett Brothers Band and Eastbound Jesus. I just, uh, I got authorization for them to offer their services for the new events center as soon as it can be worked out. Just wanted to table it in no hurry and would speak with you at your discretion about it.
Thank you, Tim. You, uh, I returned your call today and left a message. So just, uh, give my office a call. We'll make an appointment to come in.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Not seeing any other public comment. Peter, any online? Uh, we will go to, uh, committee reporters, Councilman Clark.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Economic Development, uh, and Community Development Committee met on April first. Uh, we talked about the, um, one of the items we spoke about was agenda item number twenty. Um, that's in our packet tonight. Um, there were three bids received. Uh, we're, we were, we're going with the lowest bid, HAA. Um, they are familiar with our, our project and, um, unfortunately, the, their proposal was not in our packet. I believe Jeff, I asked Jeff to make some copies just so you guys have it, so you, you know what's going on. But it's, you know, it's for our, it's for design and stuff like that. So that's one of the projects, uh, that, and that's the only thing that's on the agenda tonight that, uh, the committee reviewed and are putting forward to the full council. Uh, the other thing is, uh, we got an update on the Northern Borders Regional Commission grant that was submitted and we're just waiting for a decision. Not really sure where, when that's going to be coming, but, um, when it does, we'll, uh, report out to that. Um, the vacant rental improvement program grant project that has been discussed before, there are three, um, projects, um, applications out there. Eighteen dash twenty-two Ridge Street, one ninety-six Ridge Street and one forty-six Maple Street. Uh, the Ridge Street prop, uh, the eighteen twenty-two Ridge Street properties, vacant offices that are looking to turn them into three apartments. Uh, the one ninety-six Ridge Street is, uh, a house, uh, or a vacant, vacant apartments, five vacant apartments that are in desperate need of, of repair. And, um, and so that's one of the proj- another project. And then the one forty-six Maple is, um, they're looking to convert the upstairs attic into an apartment that is not being utilized for anything right now. So the one other thing that they just brought us up to speed on is group coffee expansion over in, uh, the Veterans Field. They're working currently with the IDA, the LDC and are hoping to break ground, uh, before the summer. So, uh, that's exciting news to get something else over there and, um, a great product as well. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Lammer, committee reports. Thank you, Mayor. Um, personnel and labor committee is the, the committee has been meeting, um, for about six months now regarding self-insurance of our employee self-insurance. Um, we are at a point where we feel we need to get the data that's necessary to make a decision as to whether or not, um, it would be beneficial to the city, um, to move in that direction. So I just want to give you a little overview of where we've been. Um, we're basically a community that offers traditional health insurance plans and pay an annual premium, which is presently a little, around five point two million dollars and climbing. Um, and that rate of cost is not sustainable in our city. Um, we reached out to, uh, local governments and agencies that were self-insured to see how they were doing. Uh, we spoke to Moore County. We spoke to SUNY and around that. Uh, I were the one who looked into Mark Donahue from the community workshop and we were told, uh, that they had it as well. And, and Mark told me, uh, that, uh, they were self-insuring and that they were saving money. Uh, we then invited health insurance carriers, brokers and consultants to come in and educate us some more on what this is because it's a, it's a big venture if we decide to do that. Um, and here's what basically we came back with. Um, we're on the low end in size as far as our employee population goes, um, to be getting involved in self-insurance, but we're not at that point where we work. We know that there's certain costs to administer a self-insurance program. Uh, we'd like to, we know that we're probably going to have to need more staff and, and personnel. Um, we could realize savings, maybe three or four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, there's a good possibility that if we end up with a ten percent tax or a, a premium increase this year, which is not unlikely, our, our increase could be five to six hundred thousand dollars. And we kind of got a feel for, if you were in self-insurance, what that, that cost us. Um, and, and what savings we'd have. And it looks like the savings would be around three hundred thousand dollars, if not more. Um, some of the things that we have to consider and we will do that as we go forward with this, it would require us to encumber some of our reserves and it's also going to require us to purchase some stock loss insurance. So I don't want to get into great details about what all those things are. Um, but what I would like to do is just like I say, let you know where we are. We would, unless anybody objects to it, we'd like to, um, drop an RFQ to get a consultant in, um, that could take a look at the city, where we are, what we have for health insurance, uh, work with our present carrier to get some loss runs on what have the claims been by our employees over the last five years, um, determine how much reserve we might have to set aside or encumber. Um, we also need to, uh, make sure that we, like I say, we've got the proper staffing to do all this. all this. So, it's, it's been a long venture, but a good venture, and I really think that what we're looking at in self-insurance may go from being a desire to a need if something doesn't break in this health insurance industry as far as premium goes, and I don't think that we see that in the very near future. So, we will be preparing an RFP to, well, get a consultant. I will tell you ahead of time that in some of the consultants that we talked to along the way, a consultant fee could be as much as $30,000 to do this, and could take maybe 90 days to give us all the data that we need. And we have to be careful, because even if we determine that we need this, you can't rush it. You can't go when you have hazard. And if you think about it, by the time we get an RFP out, get a return out, it might be the middle of June, 90 days from that is the middle of September, and, you know, I, I, I don't know. We'll know after we talk to the consultants if that can be done. So, that's kind of an update of where our personnel and Labor Committee is with health insurance. Our day users task force continues its efforts in providing safe and life-quality environment in the city park and to address efforts to assist those individuals in need that often congregate in the park. I found it interesting in talking to people around the downtown area that they go, where have they gone? Because we all of a sudden don't seem to have as many, we don't seem to have as many complaints, however, the director of Crane Library said she wished that was true in the library. So, it's still there, and we're continuing to address that. The, the last thing that I left you is some packets there. We're well on our way with the Creco Preserve property, which is the former Glens Falls Swimming Tennis Club. Efforts are now in place to have Lobello, which they're doing, and that's what I gave you, is to give us some concepts and designs to do this project. It's all been cleaned up, it's all been secured. I know then we talked about a camera maybe out there, if it's possible, that would be great. And you can take a look at that at your leisure, but it shows you three concepts for the property. It also shows you three concepts for the center building that's already there that we do rehab. And remember, this is just phase one. Second phase of this would be expanding this park, and its, its intention is to be an environmental education center up towards Quaker Road, down probably another 37 acres of property. So, I wanted to give you all that. The environmental report is in there, and the concept and design information is as well as the talk. Thank you.
Just to that, that camera that you referenced, I think if you follow up with Chip, I believe there's two mobile camera units. One of them is if there's a power supply nearby, and then there's another one that does some solar charging and then runs off of that, which should probably be good this time of year, probably less effective than...
Yeah, there's no problem.
Yeah, I think there might be a battery run, one, two.
Great.
So, that's, those are kind of the options out there, but if you follow up with Chip, you probably will be able to...
Great, thank you, thank you.
Assist.
Yeah. Councilman Palmer, committee reporter?
Yes. First, I just wanted to say to Councilman Large Clark, I appreciate the editing of the things that come on the agenda and reporting to us, and I think it really makes a difference. So, I appreciate that you're meeting again. A quick follow-up to Councilman Landry's report on the task force. We did submit the grant up to Morin County for the opioid settlement funds to try to get the lead program up and running. I worked on that with Darlene, our social worker, so I'm hopeful that that would be successful. In terms of building and codes, we had a meeting on 4/29, partially to discuss an idea I had brought forward, I reported on this previously here, about some design guidelines. I just want to read the letter that I sent to the planning board, just to get it on the record, what the intention was with this. So, it says, I've been, I'm writing to share additional context and invite your engagement around an initiative I've been researching, one that could provide timely, practical support to your work as the city experiences increased development interest. As you know, Glens Falls is in the process of updating its comprehensive plan with zoning updates anticipated to follow. While that long-term work moves forward, we're seeing substantial development activity under outdated zoning and vague design language. This creates challenges for both applicants and reviewers. To address this, I've proposed an interim initiative, a set of clear visual design aids tied directly to the existing standards in 220-225 with the zoning code. It's a pragmatic tool to support consistent, transparent, and thoughtful development review in the meantime. The proposed initiative includes a visual companion guide to 220-2-25 using real-world examples from Glens Falls and comparable communities, a checklist and design aid for the Architectural Review Committee, AKA the Planning Board, to use in reviews, and a plain language summary for applicants explaining when ARCE applies and how to meet expectations. Having clear, user-friendly guidelines would also reflect what we've consistently heard from the community. Residents care deeply about the character of our neighborhoods and the visual quality of new development. Interim design guidelines would help clarify what the character looks like and how to protect it in our collective decisions. I've included examples of design guidelines from Fort Worthville, there was another set from Plattsburgh, some from Saratoga, and a description of design guidelines from one firm that does them, as well as a very rough draft of an RFP that we could use. This idea also aligns with the earlier recommendations in the 2013 Downtown Vision and Development Strategy. The city's Architectural Review Committee, this is what it says in the, in the Downtown Vision and Development Strategy that the city has from 2013. The city's Architectural Review Committee lacks clear design guidance and enforcement tools. As a result, design review is not consistently applied, and development does not always contribute to downtown's unique architectural character. Design guidelines and enforcement mechanisms are needed to ensure new construction is consistent with downtown's historic context. From the beginning, my goal was to do research and gather feedback on this idea. I reached out to the Chair of the Planning Board to ask for input and invited him to attend the Building and Codes Committee if he was interested. I've also sought input from a couple additional planning board members and the architectural consultant. I've also spoken with planners, housing advocates, architects, and municipal experts. At the initial meeting, when this was first discussed, the Building and Codes Committee supported moving forward, and the full council encouraged continued exploration. As you can see from the work plan and RFP draft, the council would need to approve the initiative, however, it would be the Planning Board working with a design professional who would shape and apply the resulting guidelines. The goal is to support the org process, the Planning Board process, with clear tools that reflect both best practices and the values of the community. I'd welcome the opportunity to discuss further, either at a Building and Codes Committee or at a Planning Board workshop. A representative from Morin County Planning joined our last committee meeting to speak about how design guidelines can help communities guide thoughtful growth. I believe they would be willing to attend again. So, I just wanted to make sure that the, the full scope and intention of the guidelines were on the record. At the subsequent Building and Codes meeting, we had a discussion, and it sounded like there may have been some confusion about what I was presenting. I did receive an email from our planning and zoning employee who said that this was discussed at the Planning Board and that the Planning Board members were interested in pursuing this idea in-house by working with our architectural consultant. So, I will await updates or responses to my email, but I do think it's important. It's called for, you know, in our previous plan that we had, and I, I just think it would help everybody, the, the community, the applicants, and the Planning Board members.
Diana, this, so they understand, so this would be advisory in nature in the beginning, but could then be used as the foundation for architecture review in the future?
Yes, yes. And it's a visual guide, which I think is just so helpful to be able to give to applicants so they just have clear expectations of what we're looking for by zone.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Lepp, committee reports?
So, the Technology Committee met on April 28th. They, we discussed the training proposal that for Microsoft Suite products. Chip said he hadn't heard back from the department heads yet about who might be interested in training, so we can't get really a head count, we can't kind of figure out costs or anything. So, he said he was going to bring it back around to them. The .gov domain is in progress. The name has been secured, so I think it's City of, or City of Glens Falls NY.gov, but it is going to be kind of going from one station to another to make sure that the network solutions will work, and that the emails will be auto routed for a time. So, if somebody sends to City of Glens Falls, you know, or username@cityofglensfalls.com, it'll route to City of Glens Falls NY.gov. Talked with Orbital Fire about sewer and water cybersecurity alert that was recently sent around to, you know, in various cybersecurity channels, and they were looking for some more guideline about that, but they did say the last penetration test showed that the assets that are, that are, you know, kind of at risk for these things are not color chasing through the internet, so it's a little bit of lower risk because of that. So, I have some follow-up to do to get Orbital Fire what that specific alert was. CCLIX fix update is, I think, still pending to make sure that any policy that we put in, any functionality we put in, that we've got our legal bases covered. We discussed a little bit about AI. One of the things we were going to have, store tech follow up with a chatbot or, you know, a, an AI helper agent for the website to use internally to ask HR questions. We also talked about one of the lieutenants in the police department looking for a couple of programs covering traffic. We're going to invite him to the meeting to present. And we have a proposal about doing some tabletop function for cybersecurity and hardware configurations management, so that if we ran into a problem, that our hardware would be managed for configuration somewhere. So, if we need to spin up new things, we can get to what state that the current hardware is at. The next meeting will be Monday, June 2nd, at 4:30 PM in Mayor's Conference Room, and also a Teams meeting. And that's it.
Good question. And then CCLIX, did nobody have trouble with it? Did they get beyond that in our review? Yeah, we, we, I think we're beyond it, but we need to get a write-up of exactly what our policy would be and that who's going to get those notices. We believe that we can respond, and we just need to get to Tom, make sure the response is there, make sure we got a policy set.
Policy for cybersecurity policy that I think Chip needed to rework a little bit.
Absolutely, yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilman Good, committee reports?
Yes.
Thank you. Under voice vote, we have four, four resolutions. Anybody like to pull a voice vote? Not hearing anyone. Under voice vote, we have resolution one, to approve the minutes of the April 22nd, 2025 Common Council meeting. Two is a resolution to approve the clerk's monthly and PVB report. Three is a resolution to approve the Controller's Office Manual Check Distribution Report. And four is a resolution the City of Glens Falls Common Council hereby passes a voice vote resolution opposing the actions proposed at the federal level to reduce Medicaid and Medicare benefits. The city council via this resolution hereby wishes to add their voices to that of our residents, medical community, churches, and community groups who are speaking out to condemn the efforts by the current federal administration to cut these vital healthcare services, as these will have devastating consequences for our constituents here in Glens Falls and throughout the North Country. Is it, we are... All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries there?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, if this resolution is the last one, you're the fourth?
Yes.
Will this be mailed to our representatives, or what happens?
Normally, it's just a, a public record that we're, that we're standing against these, these policies. Well, I could ask this, if we could maybe...
I know, I know when I was on the county board supervisor, anytime you passed anything, like Senator Ford, if it was a state issue, the Assemblyman, the Senator, if it was a federal issue, went to the Congressman, the Senator.
Great.
And I think those should be sent to them.
Thank you.
It's a good point, Tom, I agree.
And not only those, but to our, we're doing this publicly, so we want the public to also to be weighing in on this, because this is such an important issue. And like Kate says, it doesn't just affect the talks, this is a problem. And we need to, to encourage more than just, we need to encourage our community, our everything, like it says here, because this is really a big issue, and it really needs to be followed up with all of us.
Under roll call vote, I would like to pull item number nine, which is about Quaker Glens Falls Transit. We don't have a current budget, we need to continue to pay some bills, so I need to develop that budget and then get it back in funding. So, we're pulling number nine until we get you that information. Fair enough? And is there any other roll call vote that somebody would like to pull for discussion? Thank you. Thank you. Not hearing any. Five is a resolution waiving the city's open container ordinance for the ribbon-cutting ceremony, block party event to celebrate the new Ed Market Center on South Street. This shall take place on May 16th, 2025, 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and will be contained on South Street, bounded by South Street and Broad Street, to the corner of South and Olive Streets. Six is a resolution to request waiving the city's open container ordinance for the two collaborative events, Take the Bike running Wednesday, July 9th through August 20th, 2025, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and Oktoberfest to be held September 27th, 2025, from noon to 4:00 PM. The area will be contained to a portion of the city park, including, excluding the land trust property, bounded by the block of Glen, Maple, Ridge, and Ridge Streets. Seven is a resolution authorizing the controller to decrease A11999-9000 contingency by $5,000 and increase A114104-4437 general code supplement by $5,000 to pay for an invoice for supplements to the city code, past legislation, and future legislation throughout 2025. Eight is a resolution authorizing the mayor to an agreement retroactively with Lobello Associates and Boston Spa in the amount of $45,000 to conduct a soil and groundwater investigation of Glens Falls Rec Center ice rink. This project is cyber-sensitive, and therefore the work started immediately on the recommendation of the Department of Environmental Conservation. Due to the request set forth by the DEC, did not afford the city time to complete the typical bid or RFP process. Please decrease expense account, A11999-9000 contingency by $45,000, and increase expense account, A67145-4479 ice rink other contracted services by $45,000. Nine is pulled. Ten is a resolution that the Common Council awards contract for the engineering assessment of the Wilkie and Take Res Wardam to Technomic Engineering and Surveying Consultants PC for a price of $24,500, using currently budgeted funds and the water to a budget with the water, with the sewer commission approval, and seeks the authorization for the mayor to enter into an agreement in a form approved by the city attorney. Eleven is a resolution authorizing continued community development annual payments in the amount of $13,108.49. Twelve is a resolution to approve the community development housing rehabilitation application, number H23-04 home, in the amount of $25,025. Thirteen is a resolution approving outside dining permit renewals, number nine through number 12. Thirteen is a resolution approving outside dining permit renewals, number nine through number twelve, two thousand twenty five. Fourteen is a resolution approving mobile food licensing applications, number sixty four through number seventy one, two thousand twenty five, and seventy three, two thousand twenty five, through one oh one, twenty twenty five. Fifteen is a resolution to approve approachment permits, number twenty seven dash twenty five and twenty, and thirty dash twenty five, based on the approved layouts and compliance with PROAG regulations. Sixteen is a resolution to approve the approachment permit, number thirty one dash twenty twenty five, with a favorable advisory opinion from the planning board on April second, two thousand twenty five, and approval of the applicant to remove the city tree from Glens Falls Tree Commission on April twenty second, two thousand twenty five for guard coal owner of one forty Maple Street to install a curb cut at this location to install a primary driveway. Seventeen is a resolution to approve approachment permits, number twenty nine dash twenty five, is approved by Mayor Collins on April twenty second, two thousand twenty five, for National Grid to expose gas main at seventy nine Broad Street and replace the gas service. Permit number twenty nine dash twenty five is subject to the prevailing wages requirements of Article eight and New York State Labor Law, Section one, two fourteen dash F, Roadway Excavation Quality Assurance Act. Eighteen is a resolution to approve approachment permits, number twenty four dash twenty twenty five through twenty six, two thousand twenty five, and number twenty eight, two thousand twenty five, based on approved layouts and compliance with PROAG regulations from June first, two thousand twenty five through May thirty first, two thousand twenty five. Nineteen is a resolution to decrease A six seven zero two zero dash one thousand personnel by two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and increase A six seven zero two zero dash twenty five hundred other equipment by two thousand five hundred and fifty five dollars to purchase a Gaga ball pit for the Recreation Kids Camp. Twelve is a resolution to approve the selection of AJA Architecture to provide architectural services for thirty six eighth facility located at thirty six Elm Street in the amount not to exceed twenty four thousand five hundred dollars plus reimbursable expenses and authorizes the mayor to execute any documents necessary related, excuse me, related to this engagement. Twenty one is a resolution to transfer two thousand six hundred and eighty seven dollars and sixty eight cents into the water to our hydrant materials account, number F seven eight three four zero, three four zero dash twenty five ninety from the insurance recovery account, A zero zero nine 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 dash twenty six eighty. Twenty two is a resolution to approve waiving the city's open container ordinance for the East End Block Party to be, to be held at Lawrence Street Tavern on June twenty first, two thousand twenty five, from noon to nine PM in the area bounded by street closures on Lawrence and Cooper Streets, which will be about one half block away from Tavern. And each street attendees can then be on the sidewalks and in the street while listening to music within the open container area. The twenty three is a resolution to approve payment agreement for eight dicks add one map, number three zero three point one three dash eight dash four two, which is twenty five percent of the down payment of the taxes that have been made. Twenty four is a resolution to approve the warrant. Do we have a motion for a roll call vote?
Some votes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilor Lawrence Clark.
Yes.
Councilwoman Andrew.
Yes.
Councilwoman Palmer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lathen.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wood.
Yes.
Thank you. Old Business, Councilman Clark?
I have no old business.
Old Business, Councilman Lathen?
Yes, just one thing. In our last meeting, we resolved to accept the new council meeting format. I just wanted to thank Megan O'Leary and we did a really good work that you did on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Old Business, Councilwoman Palmer?
I just wanted to congratulate all of the recent graduates from SUNY Adirondack, including Councilor Lawrence Clark's son, and congratulations to your son, too, Mayor. It was a great event and I saw, he didn't graduate from SUNY Adirondack, somewhere else. But the SUNY Adirondack event was great. I saw so many local families there to, to celebrate and I, I think it's a great resource for our community.
I, I just, I was impressed with the amount of students from SUNY Plattsburgh that graduated from the SUNY Adirondack campus. That's an incredible asset that I don't think a lot of people really truly know about. That is just an amazing thing that they can do, so.
It's true, and we have an agreement where you can seamlessly transfer and get your bachelor's degree right here in our, our community. And I was also celebrating after with one of the, the people from, the administrators from SUNY Plattsburgh. It means very, because of the social work, Masters in Social Work Program graduated its first set of students. That's so important for our community because we have a mental health provider shortage and it'll put those returns in our community, so.
Yeah.
I hope so.
Fantastic.
We'll take them while we have them.
If you, Councilman Leapp, Old Business?
Yeah, I don't know if this fits in, but I just wanted to reach out to the family and friends of Zach Anasio. He's thirty one years old. He passed away. It was, he was taken off like sport on Friday night into Saturday morning. He, his fiance is due to give birth any day, so. And it's just a terrible thing, but one of the, the beautiful things that came out of it is that he donated organs sort of for, after he passed. And there's a thing that I haven't been involved with before, but it's a, I think it's like a, like a life walk or something. It was like a walk of honor. So that, it was at the, at the hospital. And there was about a hundred people from the community there whose lives were touched by Zach in one way or another. And we're lining both sides of the hall after midnight, Saturday night into Sunday morning. And there's a lot of stuff on social media right now about all the people who were touched by him in his life. And I just wanted to, you know, mark the occasion. And there'll be funeral on, on Friday and that's it.
Thank you. Old Business, Councilman Gooden?
I have no business.
New Business, Councilman Clark?
I have no new business.
New Business, Councilman Lathen?
Thank you, Mayor. It was great to hear that the brew fest was a success. They had everything going in their favor, rain, light, cats and dogs, crossey the windows. They had a large number of different vendors who were there. Ticket sales were good. I understand that the Feeder and Canal Alliance did well with that. That seems to be one of the events that I hope becomes one of our career events during the city business draw. So I had an interesting conversation with the city engineer regarding sidewalk replacements during this two thousand twenty five construction season. I found some sidewalks that looked like they were only three foot wide. You really couldn't tell the condition and everything like that. I met with Jeremy and Jeremy said, you watch this, Bob, and he edged the two sides of the sidewalk of all the grass that was there. And said, wow, where does this sidewalk's almost four foot wide? But that's not what, that was nice to hear. It still wasn't in great shape. It needed to be done. One of the things that he said to me is, he says, you know, Bob, if we could get, you know me about, I want you to shovel your hydrants out in the wintertime. I want you to shovel your sidewalks. In the springtime, he tells me that if people would keep their sidewalks edged, that the water that collects on the sidewalks won't go into the city sewer system and will be absorbed by the lawn areas on both sides of the sidewalk. So city residents, as for your first notice, edge your sidewalks.
That's, thank you.
Lastly, I met today along with Philip, our building, from our building codes office with a group of residents on Lawton Avenue about buildings in their neighborhood that have been in constant disrepair, disrepair for years and with code violations, particularly one ninety five Ridge Street, eight Lawton Avenue, and forty five Williams Street. They, they have been buildings with issues for years and years and years. They have new owners. It was originally part of the Skellon family's properties that they sold out. That, you know, there's presently some code violations that are about to go to court. And, but there's also, you know, the possibility that the properties or the owners are either in foreclosure or bankruptcy. And again, just like we were talking about twenty six Leonard Street the other day, you know, we can have good code enforcement. I think our, our code enforcement is getting better by the day. I, I think that people don't understand, just like Diana was talking about, you know, advising everything for the planning board, I don't think people in the city understand that even if they had a piece of property that for ten years has been in disrepair, you know, we've been understaffed in buildings and codes, we didn't have good follow-up. We have that now and we're trying to catch up. But once you get it to court, if you, if it's in foreclosure, if it's in bankruptcy, it can stop. And you can't go any further with it. I'd almost rather that it, that it was in trouble because of tax arrears because maybe we could grab the property. We could take it to court, take it to that. I don't think that we can. So these just, this group of residents and constituents of mine are loaded for bear, should be. PJ did a good job explaining to them where exactly those properties are at this point in time and will be going to court. The city will, and second Wednesday is a carry.
Third Wednesday.
Third Wednesday, my apologies, third Wednesday. And they go, they plan on appearing. They plan on writing a letter to the judge ahead of time. And my point to this whole thing is those good community efforts sometimes bear fruit. So we'll keep our eye open for that because that's just added to our list of property in the city. I think what's happening right now, because I have more of it in the second worth than I've had in the past, if you get the Buildings and Codes Office property staff and you get them into high gear and they get people out there and they start issuing violations, a lot's going to come to the surface. But at the same time, everybody thinks that, you know, if we do that and they get the violation, that they're going to be forced to do that repair, that, that the process sometimes can be lengthy. But I want you to know that the city doesn't give up. So we'll be working on this. Thank you.
Thank you. New Business, Councilwoman Palmer?
Yes, I, I've had a lot of conversations recently with people about parking. I'm sure a lot of us have. In one conversation I had recently with a downtown business person, we were looking at the parking lot that's behind the bullpen and all of those places. And he pointed out to me that, you know, there's almost no striping left of the parking spots. And I was looking and I, I can see how one car can take up three spots because there are painted parking spots for them. And I was thinking, you know, I know there's a lot of discussion, what should we do about parking? But this seems like a really tangible thing we could do that, that would make a, a big difference. I was also wondering, today there were, I got calls from several people from the school that our parking attendant was ticketing kids, students, and teachers for being over the two hour limit while they were in school. So kids got tickets. And I'm just wondering, is this, is this something we're going to plan to continue to enforce? What, how can we figure this out? Because obviously they can't leave class to go move their cars every two hours. And I don't, I, in the eight years that I've been on the common council, I've never received one call about someone getting a ticket before, but today I got two and somebody sent me a video of the parking attendant going down just ticketing everybody. So can you?
I can, I can find out. I'm going to give you, I'll have Chief Smith contact you and help you to understand. I don't, I don't think, we've not done anything different than we've been doing. I don't know what's going on. I know we're working with the school, but I, I don't want to speak about maybe the superintendent asked us to do something different or whatever, but let me find out and we're back to you, okay? Because we've met with the superintendent of the school regarding the parking, the study, what's next, all the grants that have come in. And I know that we haven't changed any laws or codes, so I can't really speak anymore about it.
Yeah, and this is not something that's new. We used to, well, I used to ticket at the high school.
The kids, students?
And the students and the teachers. And usually, I mean, it's not something that you do, but the neighbors start complaining.
It usually is where they probably complain from, neighbors.
That's how it gets started. But it's really not something, but it's, it's not nothing new.
So I did have a conversation with Officer Norton and he said that in the cases where the student is blocking the driveway or something, that totally makes sense, of course, right? But the, and I think there may have been some, some issues like that, but the point is when we went out to maybe address those issues where there could have been a complaint, we also ticketed multiple people just for being over the two hour limit, which I don't believe we do without good reason, right? That's what I'm saying. So I don't want that to be.
It used to be that they had parking, specific parking boards.
There's a church parking lot, but that can't fit everybody, right? And some of the kids come and go. They have NHS privileges, whatever it may be. So anyway, I just wanted to find out what was going on and I hope that we don't make a habit of doing that unless there's, yeah. But there was today. So, thank you.
Let me get you some information.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Leapp, um, New Business?
No new business.
Uh, Councilman Gooden, New Business?
No new business.
So under New Business, I just, I got permission from Councilman Downey Hewitt's son, Danny. Councilman Downey Hewitt had a fall. He spent some time in the hospital. He, it was further complicated from, I believe that the fall was due from an infection. He's currently getting some medical attention. He's going to be out another couple of weeks. And hoping you'd all keep him in your, in your thoughts and prayers. He's, he, when I visited him the other day, he said he was hoping to get back here, that he wasn't letting you all down. And I chuckled, I'm sorry, Ed, you'll be fine, right? Let's get you back healthy. Don't worry about us. We will live without, with a person short for a little while. So he is dying to get back here and I wanted to let you all know that. This Friday is the ribbon cutting at the Market Center Building from three to five. This, this ribbon cutting is brought to you by New York's Department of State and, excuse me, Empire State Development, New York's Empire State Development, the Admiralty Regional Chamber and the city. We're hoping you can all attend. We are still hoping that the governor will attend as well. And so also it'll be followed by the South Street Block Party with live music at the venue from five to eight. Hoping you all come down. The Monroe Day Parade is Monday, the twenty sixth, and I see it's right before our next council meeting. So I wanted to remind all of you to put that on your calendar. Line up for the parade is nine thirty. The parade begins at ten AM. And the ceremony is immediately following.
My last parade.
Yeah, I'm sorry to hear that. You're welcome to keep coming. I'll hold the spot.
I'll be there. I'll be scanning on the side.
Wait, okay. And now we'll open up the, the meeting to public comment. If anybody would like to address the council.
Can I just like to say, thank the Naffler, our controller for being here and come to see our beautiful city on South Street. Everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, John.
It's okay. I just wanted to thank the city for allowing us to send mental wellness to have that beautiful tree, a whole bunch of ribbons of certainly support, especially because it's Mental Health Awareness Month and it's really just amazing, especially with like the actress population that's just has that there. People always need those messages to just keep on fighting another day. But, um, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. I've seen many of them. So we have a motion to adjourn.
So votes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We stand adjourned.